Toddlers.
Are you sure? Yes.
All right.
Ma'am.
Please stand for question of the Regents?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will begin tonight with a public meeting. Superintendent Drake is going to give a discussion on the review and comment from the Commissioner's review of our proposed building. So we'll start there.
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening.
So this is part of the process that has led the district to the special election to consider a third through fifth grade elementary school, and that will take place on May fourteenth, 2024. Districts are required to submit a review and comment to the Minnesota Department of Education. Once received, they have sixty days to review the application and respond to the district that is submitting. The district's review and comment must address several areas that I'll go through quickly. But the document itself was pretty substantial, thirty to forty pages in length, highlighting all of the information that they wanted. Geographic area and population to be served, a list of existing school facilities, a list of specific deficiencies of the facility or facilities, a description of the project, specification of the sources of project financing, documentation obligating the school district and contractors to comply with statutes and regulatory requirements. So here you have a summary of the department's review of our application. The Fergus Falls Public School District is proposing a single bond question for May fourteenth, 2024, that would authorize fifty-four point eight-two million in bonding authority to finance a new third through fifth grade elementary school of approximately one hundred and two thousand square feet on a twenty-nine acre parcel owned by the school district. It talks about a little bit of the movement from schools with Cleveland becoming a first, second grade facility. Lincoln would stay the same, KSS would stay the same, and then the new building would pick up grades three through five. Both Adams and McKinley, originally built in nineteen thirty-nine, would no longer be utilized and would look to have those sold and repurposed to meet community needs. Talks about some of the work done to those buildings. And talks about any existing bonded debt of the two elementaries would have to be reconciled prior to the sale by the school district. It breaks down some of the costs associated with the project. You'll note that the bottom is fifty-five million, not the fifty-four point eight. I'll explain that piece in just a minute. But with the elimination of two aging elementary schools and the scale economies associated with a single larger elementary, the school district does not anticipate a significant change in operational costs. The proposed projects appear to be in the long-term interest of the school district, so that's coming from the state of Minnesota. If the bond is successfully passed, talks about the debt service and in compliance with Minnesota statutes. And then the last page is based on the department's analysis of the school district's required documentation and other pertinent information from sources of the Minnesota Department of Education. The Commissioner of Education provides a positive review and comment on this project, and it's signed Willie Jett, Commissioner of Education. I will make a note publicly that this review and comment was published in the Fergus Falls Daily Journal in keeping with the requirements of the district moving forward. I did want to give a brief explanation of why the document references fifty-five point three-five million dollars instead of the fifty-four point eight-two. And that is because MDE does not account for the estimated investment earnings of the bond proceeds, estimated at two thirty-one zero ninety-eight, and funds on hand in the debt service fund of three hundred thousand, which are intended to be used towards the first interest payment on the project. Both of those amounts are reflected in the sources and uses schedule that was included with our review and comment submission to MDE. So in summary, the Department of Education has done a thorough analysis of our proposal. It has received a favorable review. It's for a new third through fifth grade elementary, one hundred and two thousand square feet, fifty-four point eight-two million dollars, payable over twenty-two years at an estimated five percent bond rate. Sits on a twenty-nine acre parcel. So with that, I will turn it over to any questions.
Is the review and comment in the Daily Journal in its entirety, or is it highlighted?
The last two pages.
Yeah, the entire Commissioner's report is in there.
Okay.
And was published on the twenty...twenty? Let me see, twenty-six, twenty-fifth, twenty-fifth, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, I think.
That's Friday was the twenty-second.
The twentieth, Wednesday, the twentieth.
Any other questions? If the public wanted to see the substance of the document you submitted, is that available just by request, or would that be?
Yeah, it is online. So people can access it there. On the main district page, there's a bond link from there. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I will call our regular school board meeting on District 544 to order. The first item would be for an establishment of a quorum.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson. Melanie Cole?
Present.
Matthew Limkey?
Here.
Missy Hermes, present. Stephen Biggessa?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
And the second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The agenda is approved, and we'll move on to a resolution on acknowledgements. Thank you to Jamie Lill at McKinley School and Steve Olson at Cleveland for their success in leading the Kids' Heart Challenge and raising over a combined total of thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars for the American Heart Association. And also thank you to the Otter PTO for their second donation to the Lincoln School kindergarten playground. So I will offer that resolution and move for its adoption. Will someone second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the resolution?
Courtney, please. Roll. Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Limkey?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Biggessa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
All right, thank you. Moving on to board reports, we'll start with Elementary Principal Scott Kolbeck, Principal of Adams and McKinley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So parent-teacher conferences. We recently wrapped up those and just have some numbers to share with you. In grades K through two, between McKinley and Adams, we would have liked to have had a conference for five hundred twenty-three students. We were able to conference with five hundred of our kids with a parent or parents. That's ninety-five point six percent. Sounds pretty good. If we break it down by grade level, kindergarten had the highest percentage of ninety-seven percent. First grade dropped to ninety-six percent, and then second grade at ninety-four percent. So I just think about the twenty-three students that we have in K through two who didn't have a parent attend conference. Makes me a little bit sad. We encourage our teachers to make two additional attempts to reach out and share the good things that these twenty-three kids are doing as they're learning and growing. So even if we can have a conference over the telephone, we'd like to see that happen. So thank you for our teachers for preparing for and then holding all of those conferences with their families. I would like to share a little bit about, and I think I did this last year. And I think I may have even talked about this same project, but there was something different about it this year that I thought was really, really cute, and I wanted to share it with you. So project-based learning at McKinley in Jessica Colhase's classroom. This year, I don't think they did this last year. This year, they added a piece. They actually created a book, which I'm gonna pass around. You'll get a kick out of this. It's titled "The Best Pet." It's written, illustrated by Miss Jessica's class. And it's now, there's a barcode for the McKinley library. You can check it out at the library. Although every single student in Miss Jessica's classroom has this book, because every single student created two pages for this book. So really good stuff. As this is going around, I'll just tell you a little bit briefly about the project. First, in her classroom, they just talked about pets, and they listed every pet they could think of. Then they listed the things that all of these different pets need. They researched each type of pet, what they eat, where they sleep, what they live in, things they like to do. Then they took a trip to Companion Animal Hospital, and I went along with them. And Dr. Franzen, besides being a good veterinarian, is really good with the little kids, so we appreciate the time she gave to Miss Jessica's class. After students chose what they thought was the best pet, they created a living space for their chosen pet. Just kind of building things, putting them together. They wrote and illustrated that book, of course, and then they talked about why they thought that their pet was the best type of pet. So really good stuff. Thank you to Jessica for that great example of a great project as we think about project-based learning in our classrooms. I'd like to just talk a little bit about Friday, last Friday's kindergarten meet and greet. I was out of town on Friday, but I would like to thank Mr. John Steinbrenner for leading what we used to call in our district's kindergarten roundup. It's been called kindergarten registration. Now it's called kindergarten meet and greet. But I think after about eighteen years of leading that, it's my turn to step aside, and Mr. Steinbrenner led it. I heard it went really good. It went really well. We had eighty-four students show up to kindergarten meet and greet this year, eighty-four. To give you an idea, compared to last year, we had eighty-five. So we had one less. Last year's eighty-five kids turned into a hundred sixty-seven kindergarteners to start the school year this year. So we'll see where that goes between now and the fall. We started the year with a hundred sixty-seven kindergarteners. Right now, we're currently sitting at a hundred sixty-two. That doesn't mean we've lost five. It means we've lost a net of five. We've lost more than five, but we've also gained some. But that's where we're at right now, one sixty-two. And then when we talk about the number of kids of the hundred sixty-two, that might benefit from another year of kindergarten. We might be looking at having approximately a hundred fifty kids move on to first grade next year. Shifting gears to attendance, our third quarter recently ended. And so pretty soon, I will be making classroom visits to our first and second grade classrooms and recognizing kids who missed two or fewer days of school during the third quarter. Give them a little token or an attendance charm that I think they get a kick out of. Just like to, a little shout-out to Lynn Johnson. She's doing a really nice job of helping us stay on top of attendance. Honestly, I don't think I've ever signed more attendance letters than this year. That doesn't necessarily mean that attendance is worse this year. I think it means that Lynn Johnson is really on top of things and helping us make sure that we're getting various letters out and following our county's plan for attendance and truancy. If I could talk about the McKinley Playground just for a second. Work has begun to maybe make some changes to the McKinley Playground for next year. So in particular and specifically, Mud Pie Park has been... The process has begun to convert Mud Pie Park into a space that's gonna be more usable for first, second, and third graders. Namely, really just opening up space. Where Mud Pie Park used to be, that was just flat and open, and kids played football and soccer and ran around, and that was a good space for outdoor physical education. I would say maybe two-thirds to three-quarters of that space will again be flat and open. However, right in the middle of that will remain the concrete that has sat underneath the shelter. The shelter is in the process of being removed, but we're gonna keep the concrete there to turn that into a little outdoor basketball court. So the city is helping us with that project. In return, I think the school district is possibly helping the city with something, so when it comes to maybe one of the ball fields in town. So if you're ever out and about, driving around, and wanna see what's going on over there, they've gotten a good start. It was interesting, they allowed some workers available to start now in the middle of winter, because they just didn't have other things to do, namely snow removal. So they got a head start on that. Our goal is to get some grass planted here this spring, so that when kids show up in the fall, we're just kind of ready to go. We're ready for them. If I could talk just a little bit about our parent-teacher organization, they're just a wonderful group. They raise a lot of money for us, which ultimately supports our kids. Our kindergarten students recently visited Otter Cove, paid for by PTO. Our first grade has scheduled their annual trip now to the Wapton Zoo, and our second graders have scheduled their trip to Maplewood State Park. Our big annual fundraiser, which includes the Booster-Thon fundraiser, is scheduled for the last couple of weeks of school. It happens over a seven-day period. I think our fundraiser is Wednesday, the twenty-second. And we're happy that Wednesday, May twenty-second, is gonna be a full day of school now, so that we don't have to try to cram three fun runs into the morning. We like to spread them out over the course of a full day. And then lastly, you've heard me talk about One School, One Book. That has been a great success this year, and we wrap that up tomorrow. At Adams School, Mr. Ebbivold is going to read the final chapter, Chapter Seventeen, to the entire group. And we thank our teachers for helping with One School, One Book, and for our families who have been reading one chapter a night to their child at home, and then they come to school and have the chapter reread to them by their teacher. Some really good things going on with that. Creates a lot of excitement and just that kind of common experience for everybody. We're also doing it with our first grade classrooms at McKinley School, and we had a kind of a special kickoff for them as well. And tomorrow, they will be doing the same thing over at McKinley. With that, I can take any questions from the board?
I noted the significance of Mike Ebbivold retiring and then reading the last chapter.
Yeah.
By design?
It wasn't. I don't think so, but yeah. Good thought. We're gonna really miss Mr. Ebbivold. He's been a longtime employee of our school district. Just a good person to have around, so I'll miss him.
He can make a career in audiobooks. He's got a great voice.
He sure does.
Any other questions about the report? Did you have a tally on attendance, or you just were remarking on the process?
Yeah, just remarking on the process. Don't have a tally right now. I am really looking forward to doing some comparisons, you know, between what last year looked like, what this year will look like by the end of the year.
Yeah, very good.
And then don't forget to keep passing that book.
I will. I just didn't want to be in a...
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next report will come from Katie Ryan, our Elementary Principal at Cleveland.
All right, good evening. We, I kind of prepared my report on looking back on the month of March and then looking ahead to the month of April. And Scott and I oftentimes kind of echo each other, but we have different statistics, so we'll keep it interesting that way. But at Cleveland, we have been, we were privileged to have guest artist Sarah Radovic come through and present an art lesson to all of the classes. And this year, she did a neat lesson on self-portraits with the students and really focused on helping them draw out accurate proportions on a human face. And so these kids did their own, and it's always more fun to see and share art than it is to just talk about it. So I grabbed four of the fourth grade art portraits, self-portraits, to share with you this evening. And they had a wonderful time, took their time. They used some pencil, black marker, colored markers for the skin colors, and then finished it off with watercolor, and I think maybe even a little temper paint. And so these are hanging on display in the hallway at Cleveland, so they all were able to enjoy their, you know, sharing their self-portraits with everyone else. You can see the, it's fun to watch them in action, because while they were focused and listening and really, you know, putting forth good effort, and then to hear their reactions and how their self-portrait turned out is always lots of fun as well. So thanks for letting me share those. And then at Cleveland, just a week ago, on Monday, we kicked off our One Book, One School, One Book for the year, and this is our book. It's called Judy Moody, Judy Moody and the Bucket List. And Judy Moody is a third-grade girl full of spunk and curiosity, and she is spending time with her grandmother and starts rummaging through Grandma's, Grandma asked her to go find the deck of cards to play Go Fish in her purse. And while Judy's rummaging through Grandma's purse, she comes across a list. And Judy loves lists, likes to make her own list. Well, Grandma's list is titled "The Bucket List." So Judy, through conversation with Grandma, learns about what a bucket list is and was concerned, you know, well, what does this mean, Grandma? You know, does this mean you're going to kick the bucket? But Judy learns more that it's a bucket list of all things you would really like to do in your lifetime. And so she gets really motivated to create her own bucket list of things that she would like to accomplish before fourth grade. And so it was fun. I had the privilege of reading Chapter One to Cleveland, and then we took a close look at Judy Moody's bucket list, and at the top of the list, it states, "Learn to do a cartwheel." Another one on here was "Face a fear and ride a horse and start a good news-only newspaper." So there's lots of wonderful illustrations in this book. It's really fun and easy reading. So just like at Adams, the students have a list, a little calendar, on what days they're reading the chapter at home, what's being read at school, and then there's some fun activities that are planned throughout the reading of the book and then at the end for the conclusion. So we're looking forward to learning more about Judy Moody's bucket list. And then last Thursday, last Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we had the Minnesota Science Museum here in Fergus Falls. It was set up over the community education open space there, which is just an ideal area. Have carpet, natural light, the windows and the like right there. It was kicked off with an assembly on engineering for all of the fourth grade students. One thing, one part of the lesson that she featured was how engineering, it has improved gloves and how some gloves are used for, are created for dexterity. Other gloves are made to be heat resistant, others made to be waterproof. And she did some different experiments, so the kids could really see and measure the difference between all these different gloves. And then thereafter, each class had the opportunity for a residency experience, which is an hour-long class where the students were able to create a design, test its success, make some adjustments, improve it, and then test it again, just like engineers do. So it's a really well-done learning activity for fourth graders. So both the One Book, One School, One School, One Book and the Science Museum were both sponsored by Otter PTO. So the students were made aware that through the fun run activity, the booster fun run in the spring, those funds that are generated are used for these type of special learning activities for our students. So it's just great that people and parents know how students benefit from that. And then we, conferences, I just wanted to share, we are always so pleased that we have such a wonderful turnout, that families come in to talk about their students and their progress. So conferences on March eleventh and fourteenth in third grade. We have a total of one hundred and fifty-eight families we wish to visit with. We were able to visit with one hundred and fifty-one of them for ninety-six percent positive attendance there. And in fourth grade, we have a hundred and ninety families. We were able to visit with one hundred and eighty-one of them for ninety-five percent attendance. So we are ever so grateful that our teachers are busy talking and sharing and presenting during those days. It's great. And then last week, third quarter ended, and I too want to echo Mr. Kolbeck's sentiments about the work that Lynn Johnson is doing. She is reviewing student attendance all the time and will send us an overview of students to review. So she's narrowed that focus for us as building principals to really take a look at who do we need to further communicate with? How can we reach out? What's already been done? And I too have sent, have signed several letters that have gone to parents, some really making them aware that their child has truly missed this many days of school this year, for whatever reason it is. But bringing that to the family's awareness and then us being able to have further conversations. So that's going well. And families who have kind of become habitual truancy type of situations, they've attended set meetings that have been scheduled on a regular basis throughout the year. So those two have been well-attended and an excellent way to get the message that attendance is so important to their students' learning and their achievement. When they're not here, they're missing out, and we cannot replicate all that happens on a daily basis. So that big, important message is being sent in a very positive way. So reporting out on third quarter attendance, and this is just third quarter. Combined, for the combined grades in third and fourth grade, we achieved ninety point three, ninety point three percent positive attendance for third quarter. The year-to-date attendance for combined third and fourth grade is ninety-two point six percent. There was more illness here this last third quarter with colds and flus and the like, so we did see a dip with our quarterly attendance as compared to first and second quarter. And we just hope that we'll hold that up a notch here moving into the true blue spring of the year. And then, I'm looking ahead to April. We have MCA testing taking place in the middle of April. We will be doing our reading MCA test the week of April sixteenth and the math MCA test the week of April twenty-third. And that takes a collaborative effort to do that well. Sherri Bernard remains our test coordinator. She moved into our library pair educator position this year and is still able to be our building test coordinator, and she is one of those people that has that eye for attention to detail and does an outstanding job of carrying out our MCA testing. So a big thank you to Sherri. She's also the person who does the annual required Proctor training for our teachers, and that took place just last Wednesday. And then thank you also to our staff. Our staff's extra effort to provide positive testing environments in their classrooms. Our students will be using their Chromebooks that they're familiar with using in their classrooms on their desks, so it takes a little more teacher preparation to prep the rooms for the testing environment. And then right in the middle of MCA testing, we have a little break in the action. We're gonna be able to come over to Kennedy Secondary School for Theater Works USA's live theater performance of Charlotte's Web. And so that will take place on Wednesday, April seventeenth in the auditorium. And that's, we've had that company here before with different performances, and it's just outstanding. So we're thrilled that they're able to come back. And again, a big thank you to Otter PTO for funding that experience for students. On Friday, April nineteenth, we have twenty fourth graders who are participating in the math masters competition at Lakes Country Service Co-op. They will comprise, those twenty students will be broken into four teams, so we'll have four teams competing that day. There's also an individual competition. I'm not sure if all of them are participating in that or not, but it will be fun to report out at the next board meeting we report at on how they, how they're, about that experience for them. And then lastly, we have Earth Day in the week of April twenty-second. Earth Day is actually Saturday, April... Earth Day is actually Saturday, April 27th, but on Monday, April 22nd, we have author, an author visit by author Douglas Wood. He's the author who authored Old Turtle, one is one of his titles. Excellent books. The committee, our Fergus Falls Community Earth Day Committee sought him out, and they're the ones who are bringing him to Fergus Falls. Part of his visit will incorporate this author visit for fifth, our fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students in the auditorium all together. Fourth graders have, we've ordered, been able to order a couple of Douglas Wood's titles, and he's going to autograph them and bring them with him for that visit, so they'll be able to bring books back to their classrooms for them to look at further. And then also part of Earth Day activities on Thursday and Friday of that week, April 25th and 26th, Katrina Case, who is a contemporary American painter who resides in North Dakota, is coming back to Fergus Falls and will be providing wildlife painting lessons with the Prairie Science Class, fourth and fifth graders over the span of those two days, the 25th and 26th. She visit us, visited us last year, and the kids, she did a lesson in, in their classrooms, and then they went out into the field and had watercolors and paints, and they did some nature painting that day. So we're excited to have her come back and be able to spend a little more time with, with each class out in the field doing some wildlife painting. And then she's going to hang around for Saturday morning, April 27th, Earth Day, and that morning she's going to provide a workshop for the community, people of all ages, as part of those Earth Day activities that are taking place throughout our community. This is just a draft of a flyer that you're going to see throughout the community, and it lists a whole bunch of activities happening everywhere, at the public library, M State, Prairie Wetlands Learning Center, lots of things going on, so a big push for that. And our students, one other activity they're, they have the option of participating in is creating an Earth Day poster, and all of these posters will be displayed at the public library right inside the front entrance. So lots of promotion about our environment and Earth Day activities, which is, is really wonderful. And that concludes my report for tonight.
All right. Any questions, Lynn Johnson?
Thank you.
And Mark Anderson, our high secondary principal.
Good evening.
High School ALC in ICP, Kennedy.
I forgot to add this, and I'm going to talk about it quickly. Ethan Solent sent us an email yesterday. We had a young ninth grader take a picture and send it in for my Minnesota contest, and our senator decided that he liked, or she liked that picture. It's going to hang in the senate for the rest of the 2024 session. So that will be up on the TV, and I'll send it to the paper. She agreed to have that happen, and I will also probably find a place for it in the hallways here so people can see the work that she did taking that opportunity. Ethan actually had four other kids send pictures, but this one was one that was chosen. So we also will be taking some time to test in April. We start next week with the MCAs for juniors in math, then we move on to reading. The next week and the following week, we do science, and then we throw a little bit of ACT in there for the juniors on April 9th. This year, we're going to have them take the assessment over at the Armory. Opens the opportunity, we have a lot of kids wandering through the hallways this year, and just to keep it quiet and make life easy for the kids testing. And then we'll have small group also down in the community headroom. So makeups will happen if they need to happen the following week. We did have a listening session with about 34 students. Tamara, former superintendent, came back and led that group over at the Community Education Center, talking about mental health, suicide, and just overall what students need from us here at Fergus Falls High School. The students talked for about 30 minutes, gave information with about 16 adults that were there typing to keep up with what was being said. The data is back, and we'll be reviewing it with our counselors and Mr. Tilke, and then we'll be starting to put some plans in place and how we can help support students and some of our staff as we move forward from what we learned from our students. They were really honest with us, which, which is really nice, so we'll have some of those conversations. Our seniors had their senior meeting last Thursday. They are now down to 32 days after the day of school left. They are quite excited. We talked about not having a senior slide. It would not be good to have an F on your transcript, and talked about not making me write a letter to their future employer or college, would be a great thing for me not to have to do this year. So they asked some good questions, they have all their information on all the important dates coming up, times. I also sent that out to parents in our weekly update last week too. So kids were excited, finding out when their last day of school was and all that good stuff. Tomorrow, we get to participate in our second à la carte for social-emotional learning. Students get to choose where they're going to go. Some activities that are happening, teachers are making bracelets, they're playing some card games, they're doing, they're making, they're out camping in one classroom, they're not having s'mores, but an opportunity for kids just to take deep breaths, kind of go where they want to go. We do have teachers who have options for kids to come in and complete work, do labs and things like that also, so it's a great opportunity. Kids, we're excited to get that today and start signing up for tomorrow. We figured what a great way to move us into a four-day weekend. We also talked to kids with our seniors about prom. We also will have a junior prom meeting here coming up about a week before prom, just to remind them they need to be in good standing. Mr. Tilke has talked to all the students who do not have 95% attendance in trimester three, and they have signed a contract, and if they are not meeting our expectations, they won't be attending prom. So all parents are aware, you can believe that they're all been in school since the meeting happened about a week and a half ago. So makes us ponder contracts earlier in the year with some things, but we'll see how that goes. One of the really cool things happened, I was able to get out and about in classrooms last week again, and I just happened to pop into Otto's. Joe apologized for not letting me know. M State was there, and they brought electric cars to the Otto's classrooms, and he went, they presented for the whole day. I got to stay and watch as Otto's one got introduction to the professor who was speaking, and his first question was, how many of you are not interested and don't believe in electric cars? About four people raised their hand. His next question was, well, why don't you like them? Well, because I can't hear the rumble of my engine when I start it. I laughed. So did the professor. He goes, well, all right. He asked the question, are you four going to get into the automotive field? And they were like, yes. He goes, you're going the wrong way. You can make $200,000 a year if you want to work on electric cars. They changed their tune really quick. They thought working on electric cars was going to be the future for them and something they could handle. He made it really clear to them that if you're going to work on what we consider cars nowadays, if you're not working on the technology piece and not getting your, your, your work and certificates in that area, you're not going to be able to make the money that the other people are going to make. I thought about maybe applying, going to school to take the opportunity to learn about electric cars and mechanics. That's a pretty good gig coming out of high school, being able to get into work or going to two-year schooling, get certificates, and make $200,000 a year. It's interesting when, when he was talking, how quickly kids started paying attention to what the options are out there for them, which was really cool. The kids also got to see the car. He brought his car, and they got to take a little tour with Joe in it to drive around. It's faster than a Corvette. The Corvette can't beat it in a, in a quick run down the highway, so the kids were finding out sometimes the rumble of the engine isn't always the thing that makes it go the fastest. So it was a pretty cool lesson for them this year. We have, also have talked with some of our mental health services and providers around about things we can do in the future with students and presentations, offering opportunities in small groups here with our students and staff, also doing some more additional presentations for professional development piece. We had Aaron come in for suicide awareness twice now, and talk to our staff, obviously knowing that we've had two suicides in the last year. It was a big opportunity for staff to go in and listen to those things and also ask additional questions on how do we get support? How do we make sure we are on top of this as we move forward? And making sure we're catching the signs that are out there, which aren't always there to see, but sometimes you have to watch and listen and just monitor and see what you're looking for. We also have been, as of yesterday, the staff found out how many students are going to be in each section of their classes next year. So they're looking through and looking on placements and how many, who will teach what with me. We also will be placing music, sped, honors in all college classes, and lock them in and get the kids in there, and then skelter around that piece, so we make sure we get the kids where they need to go. It'll be interesting. Our goal is by the end of April to let the counselors then start pulling in juniors and seniors and finalizing their schedules, especially the ones that have the college courses or do PSCO. And our, our goal is to really get through all the kids, so when they leave, they actually know what they're taking next year with the idea that they don't come back the first day and ask to be in their friends' classrooms, that their schedule's more or less set. So, and things like that. April 19th is coming up really cor, soon here. We have Garth Larson, someone I've worked with in the past in PLCs, is coming to review with our, our PLCs and our, each of our departments, to go and talk about where they're at right now, what things they need, and where we're going to be going over the next couple of years as we continue to move through our curriculum and content and using the data in our classrooms, especially with Otter time. And we got good news today. Kim Gozak was able to finish our A and B honor roll for trimester two. 67.5% of our kids in ninth through 12th grade made the A or B honor roll. So Mr. Tilke and I talked today, now we have to up the ante to try to get to 70% for trimester three, if not higher. We did have a contest happen first trimest, or second trimester. I offered it to anybody whose Otter time did not get an F. I would bake cookies and bring in some pie. The kids must have taken it pretty seriously. We had three groups that didn't have an F in their classrooms, so it went into a GPA of all the kids. In one, we found that one of our students did fail a class, and we actually took him out, so that class had to come out. We have a freshman class that had a 3.4 GPA second trimester, which is pretty good. More than pretty good, that's really, really good. It means most kids were getting pretty much all As and Bs and working really hard in that Otter time. So I'm excited to let that teacher know tomorrow and tell him in the next week or two, I'll be bringing some pastries in for them to taste test. Our ALC has increased enrollment, they're at 91, probably looking for nine more kids from here to go over there. We have a list of at least 15 kids that are interested, so we'll start working in that piece.
Is that for next year, Mark?
Nope. Early, as early as this trimester. We have some space over there. We talked to the staff over there. Some of these kids need to make the move sooner than later, otherwise they're going to be recovering more credits than they need. But for sure, next year, we'll start with more over there than we did this year. We have the room, especially when attendance is not as great. Trimesters start, we usually see an influx of kids, and then we see them come in and out as the day goes by. So still working on some of that pieces, but they have a lot of things going on in some of their lives, so working on them knowing that it's a safe place to be and be supported with. Students are engaging in activities in the career plans for after-high school. Two students are participating in the internship program we have up here, and they're doing field trips with them and experiencing in construction and HVAC and a couple of other trades. So it's always nice to see them come back up and do work-based learning with us. We're, worked and talked with Nancy Corby about possibly adding some of that to her next year to see how, what that would look like, but not taking any of her sped time away also. The first week of March was Advisory Olympics at ALC. Each advisory created an activity for the day. Students completed the relays, volleyball, word find, dodgeball, and ultimate football. The overall winning advisory was Miss Salacar's room, our science teacher. I watched them place go through, she must have made a really good push at the end because she was in third place moving into the last few days. IQ, they are not in school this week. They are beginning their state assessments this month. Mr. Johnson's going to be on the road quite a bit. He's going to be all over the state, making sure the kids for IQ are taking their MCAs. They are planning their spring social event for Mall of America on Friday, May 10th, and he's looking for the IQ graduation reception right before we do graduation on the 24th. So busy times for them and getting ready for their assessments and getting ready for the end of their semesters.
How many IQ students are there currently?
We have right now 747 kids total. Any other questions?
The bulk of the content from that listening session, is that information going to, is it available to the board or could it be made available to the board? Because it sounds pretty intriguing.
Yep. That would be a discussion for our students. The intent was it for, to be, was for them to say yes and no to what we share out, as they're the ones who gave us the information. So we're working with Tamara on that piece. We'll review it with our counselors and such, and then go from there, because they'll get that chance to see it, to make sure everything that's written there is, is what they said, and we didn't take and use any words that are not theirs. Yes, I will ask that piece as we, as we go forward.
Yeah. Whether in, in summary form or whatever, but as a board, I think we.
Yep.
Good. All right. Any other questions for Principal Anderson? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And we're going to close out our reports with Jeff Drake, first giving Ivan Hurst's report, and then the superintendent's report. Buckle up.
It's going to be a crazy ride.
It's a crazy ride.
So the first item on Principal Hurst's report was an update on the middle school dean of students. Interviews were held at the end of last month. In all, there were 14 applications. They interviewed seven applicants, and five of those were internal. The middle school leadership team comprised the interview committee. They are excited that Mr. Matt Johnson accepted our offer. He will be included in planning for the 24, 25 school year and will formally begin in August of '24. Middle school parent-teacher conferences were held on March 11th and 14th. The percentages of successful conferences are listed below by grade and for the last three years. Please note, we enjoyed the highest percentage of completed conferences over the last three years. So I'm going to give you a comparison of spring '22 to spring '24 for fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. Fifth grade went from 87% in the spring of '22 to 95% in '24. Sixth grade from 84% to 92%. Seventh grade from 51% to 77%. And eighth grade, 55% to 57%. Fluid Power Challenge. Mr. Paul Tally took four teams of students to Altech on March 19th. The Fluid Power Action Challenge is a STEM-based competition that challenges middle school students to solve an engineering problem using fluid power. The students work in teams to design and build a fluid power mechanism and compete against other teams in a timed competition. None of our teams placed in the top three, but they learned lots and had a great time. Tri-college Math Competition. Mrs. Steer brought students to Concordia Moorhead for the competition recently. Jacob Warner placed third overall, and Lydia Ugarud placed 10th in the large school competition. The seventh grade team, including Jacob Warner, Lucas Tuell, Max Batzla, and Saul Anderson, placed first in the team competition. The eighth grade team also placed first. The members of that team included Jack Brun, Luke Warner, Lydia Ugarud, and Sarah Eklund, great job otters. Food Drive. Last week, Renee Erickson's seventh and eighth grade students collected food for the United Way Weekend Backpack Program. They were at Service Foods on March 18th through the 21st from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. They asked patrons to consider purchasing one or more food items from a display to the right upon entering the store. At checkout, the shopper will take the purchased items and put them in the school shopping cart. This week, 149 food bags will be prepared and delivered by United Way volunteers to our six local schools. Shout out to Mrs. Erickson, Mary Madison, and our students in seventh and eighth grade for their work in supporting our community. MCA Testing. Testing will begin in the middle school in about three weeks. Students are tested in the areas of math, reading, and science. And finally, Spirit Week was the week of March 18th through the 22nd. The student council set dress-up days, and students enjoyed participating in days such as Hawaiian and Mismatch Day. The week ended with a seventh and eighth grade dance. It was held in the Maroon Gym. It was put on by the student council. It was put on by the student council and Mr. Steinbrenner. The dance ran from seven to nine PM. That is a great period for a dance, by the way. A great way to end quarter three. Then I will transition to my report. I want to thank Renee for all the additional work that she has done in preparing the fiscal year twenty-five budget and also thanks to Elaine for the extra work that she's put in in preparation for the May fourteenth special election. So both have logged many, many hours in preparation for those two things and much appreciated. I do also want to give a thanks to Mike Clark with Otter Tail Coaches. Mike and I were in communication Sunday afternoon regarding a Monday decision with the weather-related stuff coming in. And then also on this morning at five AM, we had an early conversation to make a decision about today, looking at the data and his folks that are out on the roads. I always analyze these things after the fact as well as during to see if the right decision was made because oftentimes you're making the best guess that you can and weather can change quickly. But I, for one, at least, am very pleased with both decisions that were made over the last two days. So appreciate Otter Tail Coaches partnership in those conversations. The speech team, a few congratulatory notes here. Otter Speech Team had a great weekend at the Parkers Prairie Meet. The team sweeps, they placed first and congratulations to all of those students for their results in the speech meet. This is the photo that Principal Anderson referenced that will hang in the Senate office. Beautiful photo. And those were congratulations to Alexis for taking that photo. Beautiful composition there and really shows off the beauty of our area. And I also want to thank Mr. Solan for his taking time to bring this opportunity for our students. Fergus Falls High School Knowledge Bowl Team ended their season, placing third at the regional competition. They were about six points out of second place, which would have qualified for them for state. This was a group of underclassmen, as I understand it, and the two teams that finished ahead of them were made up of seniors, so they are excited about next year's competition. We have some, you saw the published book today that Mr. Principal Kolbeck had already referenced. We also had a guest reader for McKinley and that was Amber Daly, who read a book written by a mailman called Mailman Dave Delivers Smiles. So appreciate the guest reader there. The kids enjoyed that very much. We also talked about Principal Rund and the Science Museum that was here reviewing concepts of engineering with our students and having them have an opportunity to do some engineering design as well. And these kinds of activities just fit so well with our vision for Otter education. So appreciate the support of the Otter PTO and the partnership we have with the Minnesota Science Museum. This is the fluid power competition that I covered in Principal Hurst's report. So thanks to Mr. Tally for his work in preparing students and spending time with them to be part of that competition. And then we have Mr. Schornberg in Mrs. Christensen's college writing class had the task of writing a textbook or a couple of chapters out of a textbook. As most of us that have had textbooks probably have commented that they could have been better done in some cases. I hear that a lot, especially with math textbooks, but this is a great thinking skill with those critical thinking skills and higher-order learning to take a concept and lay it out on how you would teach it to someone else. So again, a great project going on in our classrooms. This one I'm super excited about. This was just a neat deal that happened. Otter Tail County Highway Department's Ditch and Drainage Inspector, Colby Palmersheim, joined for forces with our high school and Mr. Witzke. And it was called the Otter Tail County Culvert Grapple Hook Innovation. So essentially, the county received a winch and our students were given an opportunity to design a piece of equipment to work with the winch to solve a real-world problem, local problem. And Makaya Abramson had finished his regular project and he was up for a challenge. And so this is kind of the story of what transpired here. You can see the photo to my right is a replication of the kind of messes that end up in these culverts and they clog them up and block them. And so between a winch and a tool, they wanted to be able to efficiently and quickly go in and clear out these clogged ditches. So Makaya spent about forty-five hours crafting a grapple hook to be used and just stated what a great project it was and glad that he was able to do it. And this is the tool that he designed. So as you look at this, not only is it a skillful example of some welding, but just in the application of the design, the, I'm going to call it kind of a spearhead penetrates through the tangle and then the splines come out to give it more of a grip and then the winch would pull that tool back out and clear the clog. So super cool stuff. Obviously, a great partnership between our students and the county and a great opportunity for us to learn and apply those project-based learning kind of stuff with a real-world, real lifetime problem. So you've seen and heard many examples of that tonight and really proud of the work that's taking place with our students. The work at Lincoln continues to progress. The photo with the kind of black tubes that are going through that, again, that's a front view of what will be the new media center. The photo on the left, I believe may be a photo of the office. Here you see the entrance to kind of, on the left, a special ed suite with several rooms off a small hallway. And then the photo to the right is a very large STEM or makerspace area that's just off the cafeteria. The photo, the photo on our left is definitely a photo of the office complex. And then the photo to the right is one that you saw about two weeks ago. And back at that point, it was just the very beginning of a restroom and so you saw some stuff on the floor, but now you see all the steel beams in there, studs in there as the room's been partitioned out. So they have started painting on the interior. I did hear from Don, if the board is interested, it's time now where we certainly could take a tour of the facility if he wanted to go in and see where it was at and that would be a lot of fun and hope to be able to get the kindergarten staff, those that are interested, over for a walkthrough of the facility soon as well. Again, a reminder that the senior yard signs are for sale, so reach out if you have a senior and are interested in one of those. A note from, in fact, this came up during a bond presentation today, just clarifying where we are at with our relationship with U.S. Fish and Wildlife on the staffing of the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. This came from Neil Powers about two weeks ago. They had allocated money in their budget for two positions to support the learning taking place at Prairie Wetlands and those staff, staffing should be done by the start of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So it's great to see that that's going to work out and continue the support of a fantastic program and learning experience out there. And with that, I will turn it over for questions.
I think there's a meeting going on right now at the library. I think the friends of the Prairie Wetlands are still going to write letters because they would like to see the facility be fully staffed, not just half-staffed. So I think that's what I'm right now. Hopefully, we'll see some more come out of that.
Yeah, a lot of advocacy and it definitely made a difference.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next agenda item is consideration of approval for the general consent items. That includes our minutes from our last board meeting on March eleventh. And then the bills and Kirby will review the March twelfth to twenty-fifth bill.
Yes, we reviewed the bills prior to this meeting and Renee had everything put together as usual. And I think also as usual, each of you has, gets a copy of the bills in your packet before the meeting. It's just more of a generalized outline, doesn't have all the detail and the check numbers and things like that that we have here. So as far as the bills go, we had one payment for three thousand and thirty dollars that was for an easement to the Adams Trust, so we're pretty happy about that, that we got that easement taken care of out of the Lincoln for the roadway. There was about a million, almost a million and a half dollars in bills this month and almost exactly half of that, seven hundred and fifty thousand, were for building construction at Lincoln, which included payments going to Fergus Drywall, K and K Fabrication, Lake Country Mechanical, McDowell Company, R.A. Morton, Summit Fire, Vinco. So again, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars going out to, you see some of the progress that's taking place in the photos that Superintendent Drake just showed. Also have, we had a payment of twenty-eight thousand that went out in our workman's comp and this is something that we discussed a little bit because in fiscal year twenty-one, our workers' comp for the year was fifty-four thousand and we're looking at, that doubled by the next fiscal year and it'd be maybe another doubling this year because of our rating going down as far as the workers' comp system goes. So we'll have to make sure we reflect that in our future budgeting. I think we have a finance meeting this Friday, one o'clock. The, we had a payment of forty-six hundred dollars for a kiln that we got for the art Food service total, twenty-eight thousand dollars went out between a couple of warmers and the food that we purchased. Lots of, lots of things going out now and purchasing for spring sports. We had some softball and some baseball equipment that we bought and some new lockers for the boys' locker room as well as forty-five hundred dollars in music repairs of instruments. So overall, again, about one point four five six million, half of that into Lincoln and the balance was into mostly the general fund. So that's my report. I want to thank Renee for having everything in good order and if you have any questions, we can answer.
Can I just ask a question real quick on the workman's comp part? Are we tracking downward or are we tracking upward on our workman's comp claims?
Up.
Up.
The mountains are going up, yes.
Yes.
Definitely up.
Because I know it's half a three-year slash, just wondering if we're tracking this way or this way.
No, unfortunately, the wrong direction right now.
Which is why the premiums are going up.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. And then we'll move on to variety of personnel items.
Good evening, everyone. I have everything in front of you here and I'll go over them quickly, but the exact dates and such, we just won't review during my session, but you have them, like I stated, right in front of you. Certified teaching staff hires, Megan Kramer, special ed teacher. She will do basically three days out of five, part-time work at Kennedy Secondary School next year, so we're very fortunate to get her on boarded. Support staff hires, Dr. Reimer, special education paraprofessional. Durham Lucco, long-term substitute custodian at Adams. Rebecca Lee and Teresa Hersberg, both are going to be long-term special education paraprofessionals through the end of the school year. Jeffrey Erzland, district-wide delivery operator, and then he will begin next Monday. Support staff resignations, we have Christina Baglo, part-time custodian, and Perry Marcus, delivery operator. And so I recommend these for board approval.
All right, is there a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
All right, any discussion on these items? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The general consent items are approved and we'll go down to new business where I would like to entertain a motion for Lincoln School Furniture proposal and revise budget on that. Would someone make a motion in regard to the purchase of Lincoln School Furniture?
So moved.
On a second?
We'll start at that.
All right. And Superintendent Drake, would you be equipped to just give us an overview or would that be you, Renee? Just to...
Renee will have more familiarity on that.
Sure. We were, we had a budget of three hundred and twenty-five thousand for FFNE, which stands for furniture fixtures and equipment. And that budget was, in the original project budget, it was determined by Zerberg and R.A. Morton, I believe what they do is probably just take a percentage of the overall project and assign that to your FFNE. So our budget was three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And so first what we did is we defined what tech equipment we would need and I did include some of these details in your packet. But tech equipment comes in at about a hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and ninety. And then from there, we determined what equipment we would, or what furniture we would need for the different rooms. So this includes nine classrooms. There's ten classrooms there, but we're planning to only furnish nine of them at this point. It also includes the offices, conference rooms, special ed areas, lunchroom tables. And so we had two different vendors come in here and both of these do have contract pricing that we can get through Cooperative Purchasing Ventures. But we worked with both vendors. We had the, three of the classroom teachers meet with us as well and meet with the vendors and kind of went through the different needs and different options that they wanted. And so then they kind of worked directly with the vendors in selecting furniture. So there were lots of different websites and so the vendors kind of just said, you know, these are some of the most popular items that you, that other kindergarten classrooms are using. So anyway, we narrowed down the furniture selection and it came down to two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars for furniture. And then that was through one of the vendors. And then there's miscellaneous items that wouldn't be, that would be purchased elsewhere, such as wobble seats. We perhaps get off Amazon, they're a little bit cheaper there. There's specific equipment for the music room and so forth. And so that's another forty-five thousand. So it comes to a total of four hundred and forty-four thousand, twenty-two against a budget of three hundred and twenty-five thousand. So it's a hundred and nineteen thousand. So I'm looking for your approval tonight, approximate that amount because we'll go through the quote and we're not going to be able to sign the quote and send it in. We're going to have to go through it and there could be a couple of minor changes yet, but that's an estimated amount, so.
All right. Very good.
The plan would be for this to possibly come out of the contingency balance that is left in the project. So hopefully, we don't need all of that. There's four hundred and, four hundred and sixty-six thousand left as the end of February. So we do still have some other expenses that will come out of there, but that is the tentative plan where that would come out of.
So we did review the equipment budget, technology budget.